Hello, good afternoon. Welcome to the Massachusetts Association of Realtors Virtual Town Hall Meeting. During this meeting, you have the option to share questions, ask questions, comments by using the chat feature. So please use the chat feature for all of your messages that you want to get back and forth to us. I ask that you not text the presenters so that we can all focus on our parts and deliver a great program. Kurt?
Perfect. And good afternoon. I'm Kurt Thompson. I am your 2020 President of the Massachusetts Association of Realtors. On behalf of your Massachusetts State Leadership Team, I would like to welcome you to our MAR Virtual Town Hall Meeting. And thank you for being here with us today. I am joined today by our distinguished panelists. I have Christian Hoysred, Political Representative and Advocacy at the National Association of Realtors. Teresa Hatton, CEO at the Massachusetts Association of Realtors. Justin Davidson, General Counsel and Government Affairs Director at MAR. And Catherine Taylor, Associate Counsel at the Massachusetts Association of Realtors. So first of all, I just wanted to thank you. We've had the opportunity to hear from our members from all around the state and listen to the challenges that you are currently facing, both personally and in your businesses. And I want you to know that the Massachusetts Association of Realtors is listening and that we continue to listen. Our goal is to advocate for your needs, deliver information you need when you need it, and implement programs and services to help you be successful in a dynamic and rapidly changing environment. Today, we're going to discuss and provide answers to many of the frequently asked questions you are asking us, such as, how do I apply for unemployment? What are the salary limits for the direct stimulus? Where can I find a bank that is willing to lend for SBA loans? What does it mean to be deemed essential? What can I do? What can't I do? And does being deemed essential negate my ability to qualify for relief under the CARES Act? Also, how do I access programs under the CARES Act, PPP, also known as SBA 7A, EIDL, and PUA? And if that sounds like a lot of acronyms, don't worry. We're going to walk you through each one of those in detail. We also want to use this town hall forum as a platform to answer the questions that you have and continue to understand the challenges as you are encountering them out there. Today's virtual town hall is just the first in the series that will be holding, and I look forward to telling you about next week's exciting guest speaker. So stay tuned for details at the end of this hour. Teresa?
Thanks, Kurt. I just wanted to provide a little bit of perspective. On March 2nd, there were 53 confirmed cases of COVID-19 across the United States. A few weeks later, by March 16th, there were 4,226. By March 31st, over 160,000. And as of late yesterday, that number has more than doubled in just over one week. There has been a lot of change over the last few weeks and a lot of changes in regulations and package relief packages being put together. And I know everybody wants a lot of clarity. We're going to do our best today during these changing times to update you on where everything stands as of this moment, because everything changes hour by hour, it seems lately.
It's incredible. Yeah, incredible how rapidly it's changing out there right now. So let's start out with smoke and carbon monoxide detectors. We heard from many of our Realtors that you were having a challenge getting smoke detector certificates. MAR went to work and was able to help deliver a regulatory win to assist you. And more importantly, the 13,000-plus homebuyers across the Commonwealth that are currently pending close and have the ability and need of the ability to get into shelter and housing at this time when they need it most, and without inspections being a stumbling block to closing. So on March 20th, 2020, Governor Baker issued an executive order deferring smoke detector inspections. MAR has also partnered with the Fire Prevention Association of Massachusetts to help ensure that new homeowners receive those inspections when the state of emergency is lifted. MAR has created a contract addendum that you can find on the website at www.marcovid19.com. Again, that's www.marcovid19.com. Now, a couple of things I want to make sure that you know about that deferral. The deferral needs to be signed by both the buyer and the seller. This is a mutual meeting of the minds, and both parties need to execute the deferral form. It also must be delivered to the local fire department in 72 hours of being signed. Also, inspections must happen within 90 days of lift the lifting of the state of emergency. And finally, and this is really an important opportunity for buyer and seller agents out there, you should continue to add value to your transaction by encouraging sellers to upgrade their detectors where needed. And in areas where the cost of compliance could be significant, negotiate mutually agreeable terms heading into closing. Now Teresa, I believe MAR is collaborating with the Fire Prevention Association of Massachusetts to create an online resource for members. Can you tell us a little bit more about that and also the response rates?
Sure, absolutely. When this regulation came down, the order from the governor, Fire Prevention Association of Massachusetts was, of course, very concerned about the safety of our new homeowners moving into a home where an inspection hadn't taken place. So we shared the information with them that we were hearing the feedback that the local fire services were not providing the inspections. So we created a survey together to all of the Fire Prevention Association members to complete. And to date, we've had 93 local fire services respond, and over 79% of them are currently not doing inspections. Those that are still doing inspections, some are doing them virtually through FaceTime, and some are still actually going out in person and doing them. So there's a variety of different ways the fire services are handling it. We've collected information about where these addendums to the contract should be delivered, whether it's via email or a web portal, or there is one fire service that still wants regular US mail delivery of these so that they could pile them up and put them in order so they know after the 90 days after the order is over, they can prepare for their workflow. We have shared through MAR to all of the local associations, the responses from the local fire services, and have asked them if the fire service is in their territory to please let those local members know the preferred way and if they are still conducting fire services or not, smoke inspections or not.
All right, excellent. And that's me on the next slide. So essential and non-essential. On May 31st, 2020, Governor Baker announced that the essential business has been less to have been updated and include residential and commercial real estate. That means that in addition to continuing regular practice within the current health and safety guidelines, that Realtors could open brick and mortar locations to workers, clients, and the general public. That said, MAR is not advising that you do so and strongly believes that all Realtors should continue to follow Governor Baker's instructions around social distancing and working remotely whenever possible. Please stay home and stay safe. In my opinion, at this time, we should only be going into the field to support critical ongoing transactional needs. Also, under that update, real estate support services such as title search, notarization, and recording services may also reopen brick and mortar locations. So let's move on to open houses as well, because I know that this has been a lot of questions with our members. Let me say this so it is absolutely clear. Please do not host open houses. I'm going to say that again. Please do not host open houses. While open houses are allowed under Governor Baker's order, they must adhere to the requirements of gatherings of 10 or fewer people, and social distancing must be practiced. You also need to check human municipal orders, because some cities and towns have issued instructions not to hold open houses. Again, we do not believe that it is advisable to hold open houses at this time. Instead, please lean into the technology available for the virtual tours, 3D tours, and video walkthroughs to help prospective buyers experience the property that way. I've also heard that Realtors are doing Facebook Live open houses, which is a great way to walk a buyer through virtually. Additionally, rental brokers should avoid showing occupied properties at this time and also should be leveraging video and virtual solutions. And if you are an attendance property, please exercise good hygiene and social distancing while onsite. And Teresa, can you tell us a little bit more about short-term rentals?
Sure, absolutely. So the governor created an order last week about short-term rentals. There are no short-term rentals permitted in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts through May 4th. So what is a short-term rental? The order has defined it as 31 days or less. The only exception about a short-term rental are for the bullet points listed below, where you can see it's for healthcare workers or people that are displaced due to COVID-19. So just be mindful that May 4th is a current date for the end of the order. We would not be surprised if the order was extended further past May 4th. So we get a question a lot, can I do summer rentals? Can I do a short-term rental for the fall? Yes, you absolutely can do that now. You just cannot do a short-term rental of 31 days or less through May 4th. Stay tuned, and we'll keep you updated if that date gets extended.
All right, perfect. And let's talk about licenses, because I know some of you are probably coming up on birthdays, and we'll have license renewals. So here's some great news for our real estate licensing. If your license is expiring during the state of emergency, you do not have to worry. Renewal dates are being extended to 90 days after the end of the state of emergency. Also, we're offering free continuing education, which is available on our website at www.marealtor.com for those that need CE credits. And also, real estate schools are temporarily approved to host online education. So I think you'll see some of those in the coming weeks as well. For driver's licenses, there's been a 60-day extension on renewals. And for license plate registrations, there's also a 60-day extension. So if your plate was renewing in March, that date is now May 31st. And if it's renewing this month in April, it will now be June 30th. And just as a reminder, you can always register online at www.mass.gov/rmv. Also, if you're one of our Realtor Champions and have reserved your Welcome Home Plate, the timeline for picking up those plates has also been extended. And for those of you that are not familiar with that program, we have a new Welcome Home License Plate that can be ordered through the registry shortly with a significant portion of the proceeds going to the MAR Charitable Foundation. We know that we are likely to see a lot of need as we recover from COVID-19 crisis. So this would be a great initiative to support if you are able to. Teresa?
Kurt, I just wanted to also share that you will have an extension, and forgive me if you already said that. If you already ordered a plate but didn't pick it up, they're not going to get rid of it. So don't worry about that. Now we're on to the fun stuff, all of the acronyms that Kurt shared earlier. On March 27th, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act was signed into law. So that's $2 trillion worth of funding that's being pumped into the economy. There are several, several pieces. We are going to highlight today the ones that we think are most relevant for our members. There's community assistance. There's community block grant funding. There's lots of ways in which Massachusetts and our municipalities can apply for assistance. Christian, I'd like to ask you to talk about some of the housing aspects related to the CARES Act.
Yeah, sure. Well, thanks for having me. So the CARES Act was passed on March 27th. And so, as Teresa mentioned, this is the largest piece of legislation ever passed in American history. $2 trillion. It's nearly 900 pages long. So everyone should know that even NAR, we're still waiting on additional guidance from some of the federal agencies on the programs and benefits provided in the bill. But we do have some main takeaways that I can share here. So I thought I would just start by touching upon some of the mortgage and eviction moratoriums that were included in the CARES Act, as well as the mortgage payment relief options. So first and foremost, the CARES Act implements a foreclosure moratorium on all federally-backed mortgage loans for 60 days, and a moratorium on evictions for properties with federally-backed mortgages for 120 days. So again, these moratoriums only apply to mortgages and properties with mortgages through Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, HUD, the VA, USDA, et cetera. Additionally, the CARES Act provides mortgage relief and stipulates that borrowers experiencing a COVID-19 hardship can request forbearance up to 180 days with an option for an additional 180 days or six months. So essentially, these borrowers with federally-backed mortgages have the option to defer payments up to a full year. For multifamily borrowers, so that would include the landlords and property managers among our membership, you have the option to request forbearance up to 90 days as long as you commit to freezing evictions for the duration of the forbearance. Now, you may notice there, there's a bit of a discrepancy between the relief offered to renters and the relief offered to landlords. Renters have a moratorium of 120 days on evictions, whereas our landlords only have 90 days of mortgage payment relief. So that's an issue that NAR has identified, and we certainly are going to be working to advocate on bringing parity to that relief in future legislation coming through Congress. One other item I just want to mention on the mortgage front is that for those that do have a federally-backed mortgage or facing a hardship, is NAR's recommendation that whether it's you, your clients, your family, you contact your servicer immediately and request the forbearance. You can't just stop making your payments. You need to request the forbearance option, and you should upfront discuss how the repayment loans after that forbearance ends. For example, if you don't ask, you'll likely have to pay a lump sum at the end of the forbearance period. Whereas if you ask upfront, you might be able to go ahead and lock in some kind of loan modification, such as tacking the missed payments onto the end of your loan.
Perfect. And I will be talking about infrastructure. I did want to give you guys a heads up, and I know that you may have missed a few of the slides. Don't worry. Following this presentation, we are going to post the video and our slide deck to marcovid19.com. Again, that's marcovid19.com, so you're going to have access to all of these materials as well. Teresa?
So another part of the CARE Act has to do with credit reporting and student loans. If an accommodation is provided and a customer makes payments, then brings their account current, there will be no negative reporting during this period of time. You can't just skip payments, though. If you're looking for an accommodation, you need to contact and make agreements with your lenders. So these provisions apply for 120 days through after the state of emergency has ended. Student loans, if you have federally-backed student loans, you can have a six-month forbearance and no interest during this time. Again, contact your lender, because you may have state loans that are not federal loans, so it may not apply to that. We've heard from some members that their children have gotten proactive letters from their lenders, letting them know. So if you have not heard, you might want to reach out, and feel free to share that information with your colleagues and friends.
Perfect. And the CARES Act also has some infrastructure in there that I think is really important as well. So it expands the broadband by providing $100 million for Reconnect Pilot Program, which provides grants, as overseen by the Department of Agriculture, to fund construction and upgrade costs of broadband networks in rural areas. This is positive news for Realtors, especially those of you out towards Western Mass and the Berkshires. We have been strongly advocating for equal access to broadband across the Commonwealth, as we know this will promote economic growth and increase opportunities for home sales. It will also provide for $20 billion for transit infrastructure grants, $4 billion for rural areas, and about $16 billion in urban areas. And with that, I kick it back over to you, Christian.
Sure. So another item included in the CARES Act are amendments to another piece of legislation that preceded the bill, which was the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. So if you recall, this was the piece of legislation that was passed on March 18th. It was an $8 billion bill that not only provided for free COVID-19 testing nationwide, it also provided for expanded paid sick and family leave for workers affected by COVID-19, including those who are self-employed. And NAR worked aggressively to make sure independent contractors and self-employed individuals would be eligible for these benefits. So most important for Realtors, that legislation created refundable tax credits designed to provide a dollar-for-dollar offset for both small businesses and independent contractors. So essentially, that includes any wages paid to an individual who either contracted the virus, had to care for a family member who contracted the virus, or had to stay home and care for a child, for example, as a result of a school or childcare closure. We're still waiting on additional information from the IRS, but we believe that the tax credits will be applied to your 2020 tax returns, which you'll then file in 2021. And so we hope this will be of significant benefit to our members as you work with your accountants to file your taxes next year. And what you're seeing on your screen here are just amendments included in the CARES Act to the Families First Coronavirus Response Act that simply expands and specifies on the limits and requirements of the paid week.
Thank you. So another acronym for you, PPP, Payroll Protection Program. So this is a program that I want you to take notes on. Businesses with 500 employees or fewer, including sole proprietors and independent contractors, are eligible for Small Business Administration 7A loans in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The application, however, for independent contractors will not be available until tomorrow. So if you own a brokerage or business, you can go ahead and apply for those now. If you are an independent contractor, tomorrow will be the application date for you. Please get your documentation together. 1099s for the last few years. Check and see if the bank that you currently work with is a participating SBA provider. If not, look for a bank. Get yourself ready to apply, because last week, when this program launched for businesses, they had over... Christian, how many applications? It was over $10 billion in requests in one day?
That's correct. And I think we've already exceeded $70 billion in applications.
Right. So the loans can be used for payroll, rent, mortgage, et cetera. So be prepared and ready for that tomorrow. And Christian, I just love your use of this acronym, if you want to share some insight.
So what we're telling folks is, not only does PPP stand for the Payroll Protection Program, but it also stands for being prepared, being persistent, and being patient. Be prepared in that you should start getting your application documents ready. You should be prepared in reaching out to and identifying an SBA-approved lender, so you can start preparing that application. And if you reach out to a lender and they're not administering applications, you're going to have to be persistent and reach out to another lender. So one of the best ways to do that is by visiting the sba.gov website. There is a lender match portal where you just type in your zip code, and you'll actually be able to find all the SBA-approved lenders in your area. And finally, the last P is be patient. There's honestly a logjam right now occurring at the SBA. You should know that essentially what happened with the passage of the CARES Act is the SBA was asked to administer about 10 times the amount of loans that they would normally administer in any given year. And then they were told to implement it in 10 days. And so there is a bit of a backup, but you should know two things. The logjam will break eventually. You have until June 30th to apply. And supplemental funding from Congress is on its way. They haven't decided on the amount yet. But from what we understand, the Senate and House will be working this week on identifying and hopefully passing additional funding to make sure that these programs don't run out of money. So just take heart in that.
Right. I also wanted to include that all or a portion of these loans could be forgivable. You have to maintain at least 75% of your staff. How that's going to apply to independent contractors, we will learn more about that over the next few days. Christian, you want to share some about the emergency economic industry injury and disaster?
Another acronym.
Yes.
Another acronym, EIDL, the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program. So unlike the Paycheck Protection Program, PPP, which was a new program created by the CARES Act, the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program, EIDL, was an already existing program through the SBA. So what the CARES Act did was it basically injected $10 billion in funding to provide emergency cash advances to small businesses up to $10,000, which are forgivable if used for the intended purposes of payroll, rent, mortgage payments, et cetera. And so essentially, the small businesses can already apply for EIDL loans because a national disaster has been declared. But what the CARES Act did was it provides this option so that small businesses can be provided with quick, immediate relief. So unlike the PPP loan, which you have to go through an SBA-approved lender, because this was an already existing program, you can go right to the sba.gov website, apply for an EIDL loan, as well as the cash advance. And as soon as your application is approved, you're going to receive that relief within three days of application. And then if you're applying for a regular EIDL loan, the loan amounts will be available up to $2 million for small businesses.
Thank you. So next, let's talk about PUA, the Pandemic Unemployment Assistance. This is a new program that has to be coordinated between the federal government and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So the federal government is providing an opportunity for gig workers, independent contractors, and other individuals to apply for unemployment assistance. This is brand-new, never happened before. And in response to that, Massachusetts DUA has to build an entire software system to collect the applications. The governor, as he's addressed this afternoon at 1:00, said that the DUA has staffed up from 50 full-time employees to over 650 remote workers, working seven days a week, following up with the applications. In the last three weeks, over $470,000 have been requested through unemployment in Massachusetts. Normally, they would see between 7 and 10. So it's a significant impact. Independent contractors cannot yet apply for PUA in Massachusetts. The deadline or the timeframe that they're hoping to launch the application process on their website is the end of April. Massachusetts MAR has written a letter to the governor expressing how important this program is to participate in with the federal government, how important it is to our members. And we are very much advocating for this to be done efficiently and effectively, so that you can take advantage of this. When the system launches and you apply... When the system launches and you apply, again, take this time now to get your 1099s together and any information you can have available to complete your applications. It's going to be helpful. The governor said that many of the delays are due to small errors in the application process. So when you do finally get the ability to apply, make sure you take your time, read your application over, make sure everything is accurate so that they can process your application quickly. We did get the question, since Massachusetts deemed our industry as essential and we can telework, yes, you can definitely still apply. This does not disqualify you. This is a response to lost wages, which our market will definitely have an impact on lost wages. So more to come on PUA. MAR is very actively working on this. And the second that the system is announced, we will definitely let you know. Okay, Kurt. Oh, no, this one's me as well. We had some questions about the direct stimulus that was issued by the federal government. Under the bill, some American adults will receive a one-time payment of $1,200 and 500 per child. There are salary caps on these. So if you make over $75,000, there is a step down. And the payments cut out for individuals making over $99,000, and it cuts out at 146.5 for head of household filers with one child, and 198 for couples with no children. Some of these stimulus deposits are coming as soon as this week. So make sure if you are available for one and you don't receive anything, we will keep you updated on how to respond and inquire about that.
And next one, I believe, is Justin.
Let me unmute myself first. Thanks, Kurt.
My pleasure.
It's been an interesting time in the Massachusetts Legislature. Right now, the House and Senate are both meeting informally. And what that means is that everything has to pass by unanimous consent. So it only takes one member of the legislature to stand up and object to something to shut the session down. With that in mind, about, actually, it was a week ago today, the Massachusetts House passed a bill that would put a moratorium on foreclosures and evictions. The House bill extended that moratorium out to 30 days from the end of the state of emergency. Just last night, the Senate Ways and Means Committee, which is the committee before, sort of the final committee before a bill reaches the Senate floor, released their version of the bill. The bills are pretty similar. The Senate also seeks to extend the moratorium to a point beyond the end of the state of emergency. And just really letting you all know that that's something we've been working on, paying attention to. And the House and Senate, we expect the Senate to actually pass their bill this afternoon. Again, that's assuming nobody objects. And then the House and Senate will have to negotiate back and forth between the differences that do exist between the bills. Ultimately, the bill will then go to the governor for action from him. So stay tuned. I think this is just another way that the state is looking to really capture some of the people that might fall through the cracks of the federal programs and particularly protect those homeowners facing foreclosure.
Thank you, Justin. And also, I wanted to thank all of you. I know that you're asking questions. I see them scrolling on the right-hand side. We're going to complete with the presentation right around 2:40, and then we'll begin to answer some of those questions. So thank you for putting that information up there. Now, there's a lot happening very quickly. I believe that the governor just spoke at 1 o'clock and that even provided us some additional information. So pretty rapidly evolving these days. For the information that you need to stay on top of what is happening, the Massachusetts, in the Massachusetts real estate industry, as it relates to COVID-19, please continue to check out our website at www.marcovid19.com. Again, that's www.marcovid19.com. Please also check back regularly as we are updating the information on the website daily and quite honestly, multiple times a day. Since the website launch, I am thrilled to report that we have had over 18,397 total visits to the website and 12,467 unique visits. That's actually pretty impressive, especially since we just launched the website on March 20th. We are also including the website link for NAR's information on the CARES Act. And you can find a lot of good information on NAR's main website Finally, I want to give a huge shout out to all of our local association presidents and CEOs who are providing outstanding information and resources to their members and holding online virtual town halls across the state. The local associations are doing a tremendous job right now, keeping their members updated. So please be sure to continue to engage with your local association resources and the website to stay up to speed on what's happening in your local market. Now, before we get to the questions and answer segment, I just want to give you a heads up on what to look forward to next week. Next week, we're going to be shifting our time slot of our virtual town hall to 3:30 PM for a special online event that you are not going to want to miss. We are very excited to announce that next week, NAR's Chief Economist and Senior Vice President of Research, Dr. Lawrence Yun, will be joining us to give you an idea of what to expect in the coming months and what the post-COVID-19 marketplace is likely to look like. Please mark your calendars and register early to be part of this next information-packed virtual town hall. And also, I want to say, I know that some people had challenges with the technology platform in terms of getting in or hearing the broadcast, and there were a few slides at the beginning that did not move through. Please know that both the recording of this webinar and our slide deck will be posted to marcovid19.com. And we will also be sharing this out via email to all 25,000 of our Realtor members here in Massachusetts. So if you missed anything at all, don't worry. We're going to get that information out to you. And with that, I think we're going to kick it over to our incredible panis. Thank you for being here. Let's start with some questions.
All right. Thank you, Kurt. We've got a good number of questions that came in. So we're going to try and get through as many as we can. And we are going to start right off with one of Catherine's favorite questions regarding the smoke certificates and the addendum. What do you do about holdbacks?
So yeah, that's a really great question that a lot of people have asked for. You can certainly agree between the parties to the contract to have a holdback or give some sort of credit to the buyer. That's not mandatory, but it's certainly permissible.
Thank you.
Also, I did want to supplement as well. Those addendums not only are on the MAR COVID-19 site, they're also in the zip form catalog. So you can, you can get them there as well.
And please do take special care where you have towns that may be higher than the regular state codes. So for example, in one of our communities, Fitchburg, they require everything to be hardwired. So if you potentially were transferring a turn-of-the-century Victorian, never had hardwires, and you had to put them in, that could be a cost of $1,500 to $2,500. So you would definitely want to take care of that as part of the transaction as well.
And thank you, everybody. Tina asks, if a Realtor has another full-time job with W-2 pay job, can the Realtor apply for the PUA? I think, Tina, a lot of that will have to do with how much you're making with the W-2 job unemployment. You can only earn so much. The benefits are capped on unemployment. So if your W-2 job is a higher-paid job, you are unlikely to be able to avail yourself of the PUA. Patricia asks, if only good until 90 days after the emergency situation, what happens if the situation goes beyond that? And I'm guessing that is about the license extension. Teresa, you want to take that?
Sure. So just to clarify, if, if the state of emergency is pushed out further, is that the question?
Yeah.
Okay, then, then it'll be 90 days from whatever it ends. So currently, it's May 4th, but if it gets pushed out to May 30th, it'll be 90 days from May 30th. So we will keep you posted on that if and when anything changes.
Okay. What is NAR doing to help advocate that permits still can be obtained from local cities and towns and properties and probate are moving forward? Good question, Robin.
Very good question.
Yeah, Robin, that's great. We are partnering with our local associations. And Justin has drafted, Justin and his team. I just want to give a whole shout out to our advocacy team who have been working day and night. Kudos. Thank you. So we've penned letters and sent them to the local associations and asked them to send them to the municipalities in their territories to explain to them that we were deemed essential, to communicate what services we need in order to have transactions closed, the lien certificates, title searches in some cases, electronic recordings, et cetera. So we are doing everything we can to educate through our alliances with our local associations to let everyone know how important it is for our work to be able to continue in a remote possible way.
Absolutely. And please do continue to pass that information along to your local CEO and your local president. We do have a regular call every Monday with all the presidents from around the state. So you can help us by when you're seeing that in specific communities. Let us know which communities you're experiencing issues with. Get that information to your local association president and CEO, and they can share that with us as well.
Right. We're here to help in any way we can.
Another question on unemployment. I'm a new agent in New Hampshire. Will I be able to file unemployment even if I didn't work last year? I will say, right now, the state's still working on their program, as Teresa talked about. But traditionally, unemployment requires that you have a payment background, work history, in order to determine your eligibility. So if there is no work history and no payments, then it might be difficult to be eligible for that program. See, I have a short-term rental question. I have clients who were scheduled to use my short-term rental from April 17th to the 28th because we are building them a house. They have to be out of their current home on the 17th, but aren't closing on their new home until the 28th. Is that okay? That's a tough one, John. There is sort of an extenuating circumstance clause in the order. However, the example that they cite in that is they have to be out of a home for reasons of fire, which I don't think is really analogous here. However, if they were to then become homeless, it does allow short-term rentals to be used to house people. So maybe let us look at that order. And John, we all have your contact information. So we'll follow up with you on that one. MLS requires a copy of our active license. Will MLS waive that during the state of emergency and 90-day period after?
So Kathy Condon and I did discuss that, and I knew that refers to MLS PIN directly. Yes, they are, they are going to not automatically disconnect you if your license expires with this 90-day extension.
Very nice.
All right. What restrictions are in place, if any, for cold calling potential clients during this time? Catherine, you want to talk generally just about what is allowed and what's not?
Yes. So as far as the current pandemic goes, I don't know of any specific rules that have changed with regard to cold calling. But do please be aware that if you're using any sort of electronic means to dial multiple people, that may be your CRM that you're using, that's certainly covered under the solicitation rules as well as honoring the do-not-call list. So please make sure that you're verifying that you're not soliciting people who have submitted their information on the do-not-call list, as well as complying with the laws if you are using an automated dialing system.
Yes. So those of you who are dual-licensed in New York, there is a specific restriction for New York State. Massachusetts does not have that same.
And then just one question also, we can look into this as well. I don't know whether you had heard this or not, but I heard that when a state does issue a state of emergency, that it does become against the law to initiate cold calling. I don't know if anyone else had heard that, but that was something that I had heard online somewhere as well.
Thanks.
So definitely check with your local regulations and do some research before doing anything.
All right, Christian, we're not leaving you out. What are you seeing regarding forbearance on non-federally-backed mortgages?
So most banks and private lenders are providing some sort of relief at this point. I'm not, I'm not sure if, if there's anything explicitly been communicated from the governor's office in Massachusetts. But I do know across the country, especially among the bigger banks, like America, Wells Fargo, et cetera, they are providing some forbearance, typically around anywhere from 30 to 90 days, and then loan modification options. But again, you have to reach out to them directly and ask not only for forbearance, but also you need to, you need to request how the repayment will take place.
All right, thanks. And what would be the impact to credit if you do accept forbearance?
During the state of emergency, they're not supposed to report any negative credit activity if it's related to the COVID-19 pandemic. So just make sure that, as Christian said, and I mentioned earlier, you proactively talk to the lender and don't just make a decision on your own to not pay because they'll need to document whatever arrangement they've made with you.
Right.
And I'll just add that the CARES Act actually stipulates explicitly that all furnitures, federal and private, they have, that they are not allowed to report any, any negative activity on anyone's credit. So, and that's for up to 120 days after the end of the national emergency.
Okay. We got another one for you, Christian. What about HUD short sales where an ATP has been issued and the buyer, under the circumstances, could not proceed with the purchase and closing? Will HUD extend the SS approvals and ATPs, and if yes, for how long?
Wow. I don't know the answer, but I'm certainly gonna, gonna write it down here and I can, I can get back in touch.
Thank you. Be honest, we'll follow up with you on that one. What if you already sent in an application directly at the SBA website?
Is this referring to an independent contractor sending an application? Because you would need to apply again. The form will be different for you. So come tomorrow, get your documentation together and apply again.
Okay, thank you. Lot of SBA questions coming in here. This must have been where we hit our stride with that portion of the presentation. They have yet to have, so hearing from banks that they don't have everything they, they need to process applications. So that goes to Christian's point. I think it was the first P or the second P, patience, number two, right?
Persistence.
If a Realtor is an independent contractor, am I paying myself a salary? How does that work when I'm working off commission? I think that is regarding the PPP.
Right. And that you would need to talk to your accountant. So really, you know, everybody, we are giving broad guidance because in this situation, you know, you could have a couple of different options and ways in which to apply. So depending upon how your business is structured, you really should talk to your financial planner or accountant to figure out which programs make the best sense for you, especially since them will affect your future tax returns. Some may be based upon salary from previous tax returns. So really, that's a question I would ask your CPA.
Yeah, we, a lot of CPA-related questions here.
Oh, yeah.
I think follow Teresa's advice on that.
And go through this, this slide presentation again. There are so many programs, and you might be applicable to three of them, or two of them, or all of them. So take the time to go through this recording again and see what makes sense for you. This information is up at MAR COVID-19 as well.
So here are.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Christian. Hey, Justin, you know, the worst thing that can happen is that your application is denied or that, you know, you apply for PUA and you don't, you don't receive the benefits. So, you know, I think the broad. You know, you apply for P U A and you don't, you don't receive the the benefits. Uh, so you know, I think the the broad advice here is to obviously evaluate what options work best. But um, there, there's, there's no hurt to trying.
Okay, a common question here, can you uh receive both the E I D L and the P P P?
Yes, so you can apply for both. Um, however, you should understand that the forgivable portion of whatever you receive through the E I D L in that cash advance. Um, the S B A is going to apply that forgivable portion towards the forgivable portion of the the P P P. The other important note that you need to understand is that uh if if you're applying, if you're applying and for both E E I D L as well as P P P. The the, in order for the loans to be forgivable, they need to be for different purposes, right? So P P P is really primarily focused on on payroll. So in order to for it to be fully forgivable, you need, it needs to cover seventy five percent of the loan needs to cover your your payroll costs. Um, whereas E I D L perhaps, you know, you can use that cash advance towards uh your rent or or overhead costs, mortgage payments, etc. So uh, you know, E E I D L is really working capital versus P P P is more so geared towards keeping employees on payroll.
Okay, thank you. A lot of questions regarding unemployment. Uh, what are these guidelines? Uh, what if I'm going to receive a commission check soon? Uh, how do, as a real estate agent, how do I show that I'm searching for work? These are all great questions. And that's part of the reason why the state is going to take some time to roll out this program. Because they need to answer those questions uh before they can tell us what those answers are. Uh, as Teresa mentioned, totally new program. Um, so it's going to take a little time for them to get up and running.
Uh, ab- absolutely. And just know that we're hearing most of the questions that are coming in right now to M A R are around unemployment and the P U A. So we're looking very closely at what's happening. We're going to get that information out to you as quickly as we have it. And know that we understand that that is one of your top priorities right now in terms of how it impacts you.
A question um regarding E and O coverage, if my agents continue to conduct business, does this provide additional liability to my company? And the agents, should someone become infected with COVID nineteen? Uh, that is something you're going to want to talk to your insurance uh broker about. Uh, I think as we've talked about, um, we don't have the standard, we don't have uh what some have seen as the liability, a waiver of liability form for people that. For people to sign before entering into a showing or something. I think it's a really high bar for somebody to prove that they were infected with this virus. By visiting a home. So uh regarding the E and O, certainly have that conversation with your insurance broker.
Okay, or any, any other diverse questions or?
Uh, we have one on electronic and remote notarization. Uh, there is a bill proposed a while back. Show that so uh, there was a bill, it passed the Senate, uh, it was included in a Senate bill that passed. However, the House did not go along with that provision. From what we're hearing right now, uh, at least what I'm hearing is that notaries are still uh acting, they're still conducting uh notarizations. So uh, be sure to check with your notary to make sure that um. You know, to see if they're available. And Christian, I know uh N A R is also working on this at the federal level. Any updates there?
Yeah, so uh, and this is going back to like the beginning of March, we immediately identified that. Um, that remote online notarization would certainly be helpful um as the staying. You know, shelter in place and stay at home orders started to to roll out and also as municipalities municipalities started to to limit their hours and their staff. And so uh, we immediately began reaching out to members of Congress um to try and enact some kind of emergency remote online notarization. So um, the way it stands right now across the country is twenty three states allow for remote online notarization. So people can conduct closings virtually. Twenty states, twenty seven states don't allow for it, including Massachusetts. And so what N A R has proposed and what we're continuing to advocate for um is that uh Congress. Enact nationwide remote online notarization for the duration of the national emergency. Um, that seems to uh to, there there seems to be more of an appetite for that limited window um for allowing Ron. Um, and then at the end of the national emergency, the twenty seven states, including Massachusetts, would then proceed in in passing longer term uh legislation to to provide for this in the future. Um, we were hoping to include Ron in uh the 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 phase four or this next bill um coming down the pipe through Congress. Um, unfortunately, it looks like the bill that Congress is talking about really has. Um, the the really has, the only thing that is focused on is is supplemental funding for the CARES Act programs, including. The S B A loans and and the pandemic unemployment assistance, for example. So we think the next bill we'll see is just going to be another cash infusion of those programs. So we're now looking at the phase five piece of legislation, which will hopefully come down the pike when when Congress comes back into session supposedly on on April twentieth. So we're going to continue advocating to to try and get that rolled into a larger bill coming through.
Absolutely.
Uh, Christian, any insight on what's going on? Uh, with loans, let's see, F H A minimum credit scores went from five eighty to six eighty. Are you hearing about? Hearing about this affecting in process loans?
So it is, it, yeah, sure. It's so we were hearing a lot of rumors um that F H A was was changing their their lending requirements. Um, but those were rumors. Um, there has been no change at the F H F A on on any of their requirements. Um, if if there are, if you are hearing about changes to to requirements, that's likely through a a private bank or a private lender. And uh, and so at least on the F H A side of things, nothing's changed.
Absolutely. And I'd say that 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 would be a good piece of due diligence as well. If you have a buyer that's using one of those programs and they were pre uh pre. Approved a while ago, go back, reach out to their lender and make sure that they're still qualified under those current guidelines.
All right, Catherine, one for you. What do you do with a a seller who is panicking, still wants to show uh advertise public open houses? Any recommendations on how to handle that?
Yes, so um, my recommendation is obviously to go back to what we've tried to hammer into your head at the beginning of the presentation. Is to limit your in person interactions as much as possible. Don't conduct uh open houses. Should be having conversations with your clients about the risks as well as alternative methods for um effectively marketing their property during this time. Um, we would never expect any of our members to put themselves um in a situation where they uh feel that it's unsafe for them. Um, so don't put yourself in a position where you're uncomfortable, uh, express that to your client. And if they want to move forward, um, you can kindly recommend that they use somebody else uh to help market their property.
If I can just dovetail on that as well, I mean, that's the most important thing. We're confident in the strength of the housing market here in Massachusetts. And we know when we come back to work in a few months that we're going to see housing uh leading us back and starting to reignite that engine of economics uh here in Massachusetts. Our primary concern is the safety and the well being of our members. So we want you to get through this safely and in good health. If you have any client that's putting undue pressure against you to do something that you don't feel is safe. Make sure that you have that conversation with your broker and in conjunction with that conversation, make the decision of how to handle that consumer. But safety is our top priority and it should be yours as well.
All right, uh, I know there are some questions here that we didn't get to. But we hope uh we covered the the big topics there again with the more uh. Individualized ones, uh, most of those you're going to want to talk to your lender about how best to handle your situation based on your business structure.
Absolutely. And please do keep those questions coming both through your local C E O and president, so they can move them up to us. And also directly to us through M A R COVID nineteen dot com. We're going to continue to watch what you have for questions coming through um so that we can continue to bring that information to you in these town hall meetings. To make sure that you have the most current and up to date information. Uh, with that, I really just want to thank our incredible panelists for being here with us today. Um, and see if you each have any closing thoughts as we head into the finale.
I'll start. I'd just like to say that we are um aggressively working on your behalf. We feel for you, we care about you. Um, the entire M A R Board of Directors, Executive Committee and staff is uh is working very hard. To provide all the answers that you're looking for. And so keep the questions coming. If you observe something, if you experience something related to any of the discussion items today, please share your story. Because as Christian will share, those real life examples of things not working properly are helping things get fixed. So that we can all use these programs faster.
Christian?
Sure, um, so you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, the the most important thing people should know is that that N A R staff were. Working around the clock with our policymakers here in in D C to ensure that the the interests of you, your families, your clients are protected in any. Uh, federal action that's that's coming down the pike here. And so we've obviously been focusing um directly on advocating for self employed. Individuals uh as well as as small businesses and we are, you know, we're in touch with our industry partners as well. And we're constantly communicating to make sure we're on the same page, that we're on a united front and not only defending the real estate industry, but also minimizing transaction disruptions. And you know, our our advantage on the hill is that we're not that, N A R, we're not a special interest, we're everyone's interest. And so that gives us a lot of leverage on the hill. Um, and the other, the other important thing that we have are our one point four million members across the country. Who are informing us of the issues that you all are facing. Um, you know, as you try to conduct your your business within these these difficult conditions. And so I just want you all to know that I am here as a resource for for all of you. Um, but you're also our eyes and ears on the ground. So if you are, are you, you know, you're facing hurdles, please. Email me, call me, text me. Um, I'm going to make uh my my email and my cell phone number available. We want to hear from you and and we want to try to to do whatever we can on the national level um to to minimize uh the disruption to your businesses uh during this crisis.
Thank you, Christian.
And I will just echo Christian's comments, you know, we we need to know about the problems in order for us to take them on. So please uh do let us know what you're seeing. Uh, in the industry, um, and we'll do our best to take care of it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just echo what everyone else said. We are here for you. I know there were a lot of questions that uh we may not have gotten to in the chat box. Uh, certainly feel free to reach out to any of us. You can also use the M A R legal hotline. Um, you can email us at legalhotline@ma-realtor.com or you can call one eight hundred three seven zero five three four two. Uh, if you're an authorized user, we're happy to talk to you about any questions you have.
Perfect. And I just want to thank you personally for being here with us today. Please do mark your calendar for next Thursday at three thirty P M. When we have Dr. Lawrence Yun with us. Again, continue to reach out to us um through your local presidents and local CEOs or directly. M A R COVID nineteen dot com. And just know that the Realtor Association is working hard for you on all three levels, local, state and national. And we're all going to get through this together and restart the housing market here in Massachusetts, hopefully fairly shortly. So thank you for listening and today we look forward to seeing you again next week. We're sending out the slides, we're sending out the videos to you via email and you'll also be able to access those again at M A R COVID nineteen dot com. Have a fantastic day and thank you for being here with us. Until next time.